Good evening, everybody. I'd welcome you to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, January 26th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "O Canada." (Music) Thank you to the Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio for "O Canada," and to the National Film Board for the images of our country. I would move into the adoption of previous council meeting minutes. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the minutes of the city council meeting held January 12th, 2015 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes before we adopt them? Seeing nothing, nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that would bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Councillor Thiessen?
I move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Sure, I think we may have one additional item tonight. I'm just looking over at administration. I think we're looking to add Agenda Item 9.2.1, which was regarding forgiveness of GP Gymnix mortgage
Starting to fill up, but I think we've got a few years ahead of us.
Okay, and the only other one I want to throw on the radar is I do believe it's probably fit in the model for 10 years, but I think in 10 years it might change a bit with solar power and everything happening, so I'm not going to really answer that one, but I do believe it looks good for 10 years.
Thanks, Councilman McLean. Councilor Rice?
The agreement, I believe, that was eventually entered into contains many of the AUMAs best practices clauses as well as it reflects and it's listed in there the goodwill of both parties, correct?
Yes, that's right. The agreement was actually developed amongst Alberta Utilities, sorry, Alberta Urban Municipalities Association and ATCO and Fortis Alberta to arrive at clauses that would be beneficial for all parties. And then from there, there were some amendments suggested in the negotiation process between us and the city. And we believe that what we've come up with is something that's very much like the AUMA template, but with a few things that make it more ideal for us here in Grand Prairie.
And you have no problem with supporting the streetlight conversion project as it moves forward?
I'm sorry, say that again, Helen?
Using all the the streetlights with LED or equivalent.
Absolutely. We definitely want to work with the city to be able to to achieve that.
Okay, don't see any other questions for the delegation. Gentlemen, thanks very much for your participation in the process. I know that it's been close to a year that you've been working with administration on development of this, and certainly appreciate the willingness and that CO always shares chose to be such a good community partner, and that was evident through this process. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so this is, that's the end of our delegations that let us know that they were going to be here. We do have this opportunity at every regular city council meeting for anybody in the community that would like to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. It doesn't look like we have anybody else that's going to come forward tonight, but I'll ask one more time. Is there anybody else that'd like to address council? Seeing nobody coming forward, then I'll close the delegation portion of our agenda, and we move on. We have no public hearings tonight, no unfinished business, no reports. So we get to go straight into committee business, and we'll start with item 9.1, the Community Growth Committee Meeting from January 13th. Council O'Toole, are you going to handle that one for us?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee Meeting held on January 13th, 2015.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Any notes to that? Any errors or omissions that we want to catch at this point? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote to adopt that set of minutes. Thank you. That motion carries. Council O'Toole, anything you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
I want to report that they, we had a discretionary use of variances at a company, a landowner that wanted to put a bulk chemical and fuel storage facility in, and there was some variances to make this happen. And the committee at that time felt that this was the best location with rail access and road access, that this would be the probably the best suited location in the city, so we passed that.
Okay, thanks very much. Council Rice?
Can we go back to the minutes of the safety committee? That's what we just approved, right?
No growth.
Growth, okay.
Yeah, so we're still on Community Growth Committee, and Council O'Toole shared some highlights. The set of minutes was adopted, and we've moved to 9.2, the Community Living Committee from January 13th. Council Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee Meeting held January 13th, 2015.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like they are accurate?
They are now.
They are now, okay. Thank you very much. And this is where we're going to add our additional item, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. So I will call for the vote to adopt that set of minutes. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Radburn, I think you have that one piece of business arising that was our additional agenda.
Sure, thank you. I would move that council forgive the Gymnics Society the remaining two mortgage payments in amounts of $96,000, $96,927.79 for December 214 and $96,927.79 for June 2015. The context for this motion is as follows. In 2005, an agreement was established with the Gymnics whereby one half of the cost savings to construct the East Link Center using the walls from the Gymnics facility would be refunded to the Gymnics. After much discussion over a number of years, discussion, negotiation, and even mediation, it was, it has been agreed tentatively by the parties involved that the last two mortgage payments would be forgiven to honor the intent of the 2005 city agreement with the Gymnics. I think that covers the context. They were varying a couple of different junctures during this discussion. There were a couple of amounts that the contractor suggested. At one time it was 900,000-ish over to be split, and more recently it was more like a couple hundred thousand. So this is in the lower end of those two ranging estimates we had. And so that's, that's, we bring forth, this is kind of a, an agreement that's compromised. Gary did report, and I confirmed with Director Anderson, that these amounts have been accounted for within our fiscal services budget in 2014. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. Open for discussion or debate. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just want to speak very highly of Gymnastic Society. I'd like to see more groups in the area in sports to raise the money and build their facility, and then say, okay, the city, now you operate it because we know it's expensive. And if you go in that facility today, it's well-used, well-maintained, it's part of the East Link Center, and this is just smart business for the city. This is, I mean, I'd love to see some hockey teams come together and say, we'll raise money for arena. There would not be a gymnastic building if it wasn't for these individuals that worked for years to raise the money. And hats off to them, and we should have a couple more. Thank you.
Thanks, Council McLean. Council Radburn?
So if there, yeah, I just wanted to confirm, Council McLean, it's actually, I think it's been 70% increase in participation over the last number of years. And yes, the Gymnics put and wrote, raised 4.3 million, and this mortgage was another 1.7 million that they borrowed, and I guess we paid and they, we borrowed it, and then they paid the borrowing costs. So, yeah, so they've been a great partner, for sure. And the other thing at the committee, for those who weren't able to attend, they're very, very pleased with their location and being a partner on our community knowledge campus, and they felt they benefited from that location, and they're going strong. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Radburn. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Again, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Radburn, anything else you'd like to highlight?
That was the sole agenda item, Mayor Given. Thank you.
Thank you. So that'll take us to 9.3, the Community Growth Special Meeting. Council O'Toole, oh, sorry, Council Radburn, you took that. Yeah, sorry, excuse me.
That day, it wouldn't be fair for me to go through without.
I would move council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Special Meeting held January 20th, 2015.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Council Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council give first reading to bylaw C-1139M utility bylaw.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. This isn't a public hearing, so we do have an opportunity, of course, if we wish to have discussion debate. I just would like to note, Mr. Mann said that the other municipalities had given, I believe, only first or second reading to the utility bylaw. I'd like to ask council to consider passing first reading and then having an opportunity to discuss with our partner municipalities if there are any amendments that they may be considering bringing forward. So a little bit different than our regular practice of doing all three readings as we might do otherwise. So I just wanted to catch that here before we got on a roll.
Just do first reading?
Okay, yeah. Okay. Any discussion or debate on the motion for first reading? Council Rice?
It's unusual to speak after first reading, but this isn't, I'll give you the process. There are several clauses in here, yellow highlighted. Does that mean they're changes or those are the, those are the changes that are contained in this document? Thank you.
That's correct. Anything further on first reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. So I'd suggest we could probably move on from there, and this will naturally come back at our next council meeting, and we'll have an opportunity to consult with our other partner municipalities. Okay, and I think that special community growth, that was the only agenda item on it. And so that would take us to 9.4, the Community Safety Committee Meeting, and Council McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council see the minutes, Community Safety Committee Meeting held January 20th, 2015.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Councilors Radburn, Thiessen, and Rice, let's see if you all have the same thing. Council Radburn?
Thank you. And just in terms of the absent, Council Rice is a, is a member of that committee, but Councilors Thiessen and Logan are not, so they shouldn't be accounted for as being absent.
Okay, okay. So we'll make sure that we do that catch. And Council Rice, what did you have?
I don't think Council McLean is the acting chairman.
I think he's the actual chairman.
Yeah.
Yep, so we'll, so we'll catch that as well. Thanks very much, council. So we'll get those changes made. So we'll call for the vote on the adoption of that set of minutes as amended. Call for the vote now. Thank you. That motion carries. Council McLean? Thanks very much, Council McLean. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And my understanding with the process on this one is after first reading is introduced at a council, it actually has to be approved by a higher authority. Goes to the Alberta Utilities Commission for approval there, and then it would come back to us for second and third reading and final approval. See the guys from ATCO in the, in the audience nodding their heads, I must have got it right. So we'll see that bylaw come back as well. Council McLean, you have 9.4.2.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would count provide a resolution to terminate the joint UQMP with the Town of Beaver Lodge and approve a standalone single UQMP for the city of Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. Discussion and debate. Council Rice?
How much notice did we give them? I, I know the, when we had first signed the agreement, they were thrilled, you know, to have this level of service available. So how much notice did we give them that we wouldn't be renewing the contract?
Mr. Galante, anyone speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our chief building inspector has been in communication with the CEO of Beaver Lodge for the last three, four months, discussing this matter. Even there is an extension until the end of January, so they are fully aware, and they procure already the services from other jurisdiction. The county will be providing inspection services for the Town of Beaver Lodge.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. And my understanding, Mr. Galante, this is, so this, what we're doing tonight is actually not about the provision of service, it's actually about our two municipalities having adopted by bylaw or by council motion a joint plan. Basically, we're severing the two plans. So it's not so much about the provision of service, as it is about the fact that we passed, what was it, kind of like a bylaw that had another municipality in it, and now we're saying, let's separate them. So, okay. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1312 Fire Service Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. Open for discussion or debate? That motion carries. Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council give second reading to bylaw C-1312 to Fire Service Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Again, I don't see anybody in the queue. Call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council have third reading to bylaw C-1312 to Fire Service Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion to have third and final reading here tonight? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carried, as that was unanimous. Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1312 Fire Service Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council McLean, you're not done yet. More business, hey?
Thank you, Mayor Given. It was a busy committee. I move that council adopt the Safe City Roads Action Plan as amended.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Council McLean, is that all the items of business, or is there anything else you'd like to highlight from that meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple to pick off. It was a pretty long meeting, and well worth it. The ATCO franchise agreement, as we know, will be a 10-year agreement, going to the provincial government and then coming back. They're a strong employer in the community. They built a new building, and they're willing to work with council quite strongly. And I found that to be very good, and thank our Community Safety Director Asher and all the city staff for working on this. It was well done out. It wasn't, it was over a year, and I found it to be very positive. I do believe solar power, though, in the next 10 years will be a different game. So, and the other one I'd like to speak to is Safe City Roads Action Plan. I found this very disturbing about some of our intersections and some of our speeds in our city, and some of the injuries, and more than double than other same similar-sized cities. And yes, we, there's an action plan, but a lot of what this council has done is with our CMP coming on, they take quite a while to get the officers, bylaw, and training. And the big question I threw out is, I'm glad it's starting, but what about right now? And a lot of it's probably tickets, 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 because people are getting injured out there, and way more than the other cities in the city, in the province of Alberta. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Council McLean. So that would take us to the Corporate Services Committee Meeting from January 20th. And Council Logan, did you handle that one? Council Radburn, sure, well, sure. Chair, yeah, that's right. Okay, Council Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee Meeting held January 20th, 2015.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Next item of business is 9.5.1. Council Rice?
I would declare conflict. Leave your, that's my employer.
Thanks very much. So Council Rice will declare conflict of interest with item 9.5.1. And Council Radburn, we'll move back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council review the 2015 Business Revitalization Zone Budget on Monday, March 9th, 2015 at 6:30 PM. This is an annual piece of business. It will go to the Downtown Business Association for ratification later this late, late February, I believe, and then, and then it will come to council after that on March 9th. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Okay, seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we could let Council Rice know that our business has been dealt with. Council Rice? Okay, Council Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council award Tender T-71-547-14 supply of two new six-wheel high-dump room street sweepers to Joe Johnson Equipment, Inc., in the amount of $478,754, excuses of GST, as the lowest bidder meeting city specifications.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Council McLean?
Just a quick question. It's not quite related directly to Tender, but are we keeping an older model and keeping it serviceable? Can someone answer that question? We're not just going out all new? Okay, I would mind to find that out, too.
Mr. Anderson, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, I'll try. We, this is a replacement of two older pieces of equipment. We do have other equipment as well, so this is, this is a normal replacement cycle.
Thanks very much. One thing from the committee meeting that I do remember the fleet manager referencing was that this is planned replacement in terms of life cycle, but there was one unit that they chose to jump the queue and replace a little bit sooner than an older one, because they found that that unit was becoming pretty costly in terms of repairs. And so they're retiring one unit a little bit sooner than they might have otherwise, because the older unit is still doing fine, where this one had, was requiring more repairs. They just want to get it out of the, yeah, okay. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And was there any other items of business that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes, Council Radburn? No, okay, nothing. And that handles all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence. I believe our three pieces of delegation business were all handled during the meeting. And then we don't have any notices of motion in front of us. So that'd take us to council member reports. Council Rice, I'll look to you for AUMA.
Okay, AUMA, I attended two Municipal Government Act Review Meetings, one of them with the business community, the Canadian Association of Petroleum Producers, UDI, the Home Builders, the Alberta Chamber of Commerce. The, the review is going much more quickly than I had originally thought it might, and so it's, it's really, it's been moving ahead very well. I met with the Alberta Energy Regulator Consultant, read the systems improvements, hired to come up with systems that they can measure whether or not they're doing a good job with the single regulator. I met with the Alberta Federal Progressive Conservative Caucus to talk about joint issues, and we did a, I did a presentation on the Build Canada Fund, and did stress to them how important it was that they get involved in supporting the municipalities. It says when that chunk goes to the province, they don't use it for provincial projects, that it be filtered straight down to the municipalities that complimented them on the gas tax, and the way that that is formulated and processed, and in how, what a blessing it is to municipalities. Participated in the signing of the Municipal Government Act Review and Timeline Agreement. They had been talking that they might delay it to 217, and we said, yeah, that, we don't want that to happen. So in the spring of this year, you will see a bunch of amendments to the MJA going forward. In the fall, there will be a whole bunch more. The regulations will be written in 216, and it will be passed. So the committee that the mayor is on is going to have to put some afterburners on very quickly here, much more quickly than we had anticipated. I met with the Rural Alberta Healthcare Review Committee chaired by Dr. Starkey. I was really impressed. They're what, what we call boots on the ground, in the boots on the ground. They're not talking highly philosophical. They're talking what needs to be done to make healthcare accessible to all Albertans. So I look forward to their report.
Thanks very much, Council Rice. I think next we had Community Futures of Grand Prairie and Region, Councilor Logan.
We're just simply reviewing the funding applications and, and evaluating, leading up to the end of last year, and quite impressed with how the organization handles itself and the, the people that come forward with applications to it. But what was kind of neat was just in the last couple of weeks, we had, instead of the regular meeting, we had one where we did some planning and, and almost philosophi, philosophical discussion on, on the whole thing. I don't believe it was anything other than a bit of academic discussion, because of course we have all kinds of things in place that would be very hard to change. But it was excellent discussion, good staff, and good board, so pleased to report positively on that.
Thanks very much, Council Logan. Council Radburn, I believe you had Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association.
Yes, Mayor Given, thank you. January 15th, Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Board Meeting. I think it was our first meeting since the AGM in late November. Just to let council know, Jason Hawa is our new president, Paul Zeica is our new vice president, Greg Gayden is our treasurer, and Leslie Vandermark. Greenview is having Leslie as a public member represent there, she's still involved. We fill out our committees, policy, membership, DMF Human Resources Nomination Committee, I'm on policies and human resources. And we're moving forward this next number of months with a service review consultation with members and recruitment of new members. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. Council Clayton, the Grand Prairie Sports Council?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick update or reminder on the upcoming event on March 7th. The Northwest Alberta Sports Excellence Awards will take place. This coming Saturday, January 31st, is the deadline for applications. There's two applications that are available if you go online to gpsportcouncil.ca, and there's high-performance awards, possibility to nominate people, as well as community awards. And in the community awards, there's lots of great people out there that everyone knows that would be really a way to thank people for the work that they do, things such as developmental coach of the year, sport citizen, outstanding official, sport builder, community sport, and the unsung hero. So I really encourage everyone to go onto the website, gpsportcouncil.ca, and put forward some nominations. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Clayton. Looking forward to this first several awards. Council Radburn, we'll come back to you for Grand Spirit Foundation.
Thank you, Mayor Given. January 23rd, I chaired the management committee meeting. We approved or received the audit service and engagement plans, going through our audit here in the next few weeks. We talked and approved a health and safety audit improvement plan. We just came through a internal safety audit. Every three years, we do an external, and the other years we do internal. So next year is an external. We looked at some policy revisions, and we looked and approved the rate sheet and admin rate sheets and the 2015 senior apartment rent ceilings. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. And then we had one final report, I believe. Sorry, council lost my place.
From the Grand Prairie Public Library Board.
Council Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Yes, we met last week on Tuesday to discuss, you know, just back to, back to the grind, I guess, the year thing. We didn't have a December board meeting, but with this new year, we also welcomed two new members to the Grand Prairie Public Library Board, Ms. Tam Brown and Mark Evans. So they were quick to jump onto the board and get into the action, so that was great. Some of the topics of discussion that we had at that meeting revolved around a service review of our board committees. So we reviewed the finance committee, the human resources committee, as well as the planning committee, and it was the board's will to eliminate the planning committee because it wasn't doing too much over the past two to three years, so we thought we might just be better served to do an ad hoc committee when, when appropriate. And then from there, we just touched up some policy, and according to the executive director, Maureen, that is the last of it. So we did record retention and cleaned that all up, and no more policy. So it's quite exciting. We won't have to look over that for another couple of years. Yeah, so, and that's my report on the library.
Thanks very much, Council Thiessen. I would say about policy, as you think, that's the last of it. But inevitably, they'll be back. Counselor O'Toole? But inevitably, they'll be back. Uh, Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, I just had a question there, Chris, Counsel Thieson?
Sure.
Um, that new room that they had developed, uh, over the last couple of years?
Yes.
Is it getting used now and is, or do we have to build on to the, the library now?
I'm, I'm glad that, uh, I'm glad that you asked that, Counsel O'Toole, because it was announced, uh, without very many details at, at our boardroom, that, uh, that the room is completely finished and open to the public. They haven't done a dedication day yet, but that should be upcoming real soon. Uh, and, uh, council would be happy to know as well that, uh, the cost to renovate the room actually came in under budget. Uh, the numbers floated around, we're twenty to forty, but don't quote me on that, because we gotta wait till the next board meeting to get the overall final number, so.
It's a good.
Very, thank you very much. Thank you.
Uh, I don't believe there were any other, uh, external reports that anybody let me know of ahead of time. Uh, and if there weren't, then we'll start with counsel roundtable with Counsel Thieson. So that's where we left off?
All right, well, uh, it's a fairly busy week, but, uh, of course, we got these handy-dandy new sheets to hand in. I'm doing mine electronically, which I'll hand it to him in. I just wanted to touch on, uh, two events, uh, that I attended, uh, here recently. Uh, one was, uh, council's luncheon with the Chamber of Commerce on, uh, Friday, February the twenty-third, uh, where we had a nice little roundtable discussion around advocacy priorities, uh, such topics as, uh, Highway forty-three X. If, is that gonna happen? When's that gonna happen? Uh, and also, uh, Highway forty potential twinning for, and getting, uh, traffic count flows. That was part of the discussion as well. Uh, something that was news to me, but, uh, was a really great point made by the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, was, uh, uh, the potential to add either an extra lane or lights to the hundred and thirty-second and hundred and sixteenth street, uh, roadway, uh, there. Uh, they're saying it's getting kind of congested and backed up, and, uh, they're hoping that we might be able to help them with that. Uh, all in all, it was a great, robust discussion about, uh, you know, what we need to do in order to grow this, uh, little town economically and, uh, roadways as, in that regard. And also finally, um, you may notice I'm wearing a t-shirt. Usually only save t-shirts for, uh, for budget, uh, but, uh, it was, I was requested, uh, to wear red today in, uh, honor of our fallen RCMP officers, uh, elsewhere in the province. Uh, and to speak to that, uh, I was at the memorial service with several council members here, uh, yesterday, uh, down at the Tricia Sergeant Hall to, uh, uh, give our, I guess, our, our best memory and, and our honor to the fallen officer, David Wynn. Uh, Mayor Bill Given spoke, uh, at that event. I think you, uh, touched and hit the nail on the head with how this affects not only RCMP officers, uh, the general public, but also the families, uh, not of the ones affected, but of all RCMP officers, so I was really happy to hear that comment there. And, uh, to our fallen brothers and to anyone who's suffering through this, I wear red in support of you and, uh, hope that, uh, you know, we never have to see a day like that again.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Counsel Logan?
Uh, that, uh, quite thoroughly enjoyed, that was, uh, being invited to, uh, lunch at, uh, by the Volunteer Services Bureau. They occupy now the, what used to be the, uh, Perry Centre in downtown Grand Prairie. They've, uh, fixed up a portion of that facility to conduct their, uh, programs out of. Uh, they're just doing a tremendous job, uh, been able to expand the range of the programs they're offering. And, uh, when you look at what they're doing, talk to the people down there, it gives you a great deal of confidence in, uh, what this organization is doing now that they've got a good central office to come out of.
Thanks very much, Counsel Logan. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll just speak to two things here. One, uh, fellow counselors, Counsel Evern, Counsel Thieson, myself, Mayor Given at the memorial yesterday that they held in City Grand Prairie, and, and not done, Counsel O'Toole. I knew there was one more, I just had to put it all together, sorry about that. Um, so I am wearing red today because of that. Uh, it was very sad when I did hear the news. I have family and friends in St. Albert. Um, the mayor used to live in the city of Grand Prairie here, and there's a lot of connection between our city and their city, and constables do go back and forth, uh, certain sides of cities of, uh, Red Deer, St. Albert. So there is a connection even more than others might realize. Um, and of course, my eyes were glued to the TV today for, um, the fallen RCMP Constable David Matthew Wynn and to his, um, his wife and three children, his three boys. So, very sad about this news. The other news I had today too, wasn't as sad, but I was, um, surprised, but I want to read it, because, uh, there's a leader in our province has stepped down from the Alberta Liberal Party, Raj Sherman. And I am bringing it up because I did run for him under his banner in two thousand, uh, twelve. I'm just gonna read a statement he wrote, and I, that's why I ran. So I'm gonna read it, what he wrote out, and I think it's appropriate. "We truly live in the best province, best country in the world, but not all of us share equitable in our province's vast wealth. It was once said that the moral test of government is how the government treats those who are in the dawn of life, the children, those who are in the twilight of life, the elderly, and those who are in the shadows of life, the sick, the needy, and the persons with disabilities. So let's make sure more Albertans do better. Be the change you want to see in the world. Never cease striving for the very best of yourselves, for others, and from your government. I thank all Albertans for the privilege for allowing me to serve the public interest the best I could." And what I really loved about Raj was that sentence there, the, uh, about the youth and the elderly. But also, he always finished the statements with, "Thank you, God bless you all, and God bless Alberta." And I just want to say thank you, Raj Sherman, for, uh, being the leader in Alberta for the last so many years.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel McLean. Counseler Evern?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I'll just highlight a couple as well today. Uh, I attended the Peace Health Advisory Council meeting, and I hadn't been to one before. Counsel Thieson and Clayton actually joined me and found that, um, interesting and found, find out, get some updates and find out what, uh, they're all about, and so I, I, I think, uh, I'll attend on an annual basis probably, just, uh, to keep in touch. I think it's a, uh, a good group that, uh, helps Alberta Health Services deliver the best programs possible. And they're kind of the ear in the community, which I think is a useful function for that group as well. And I, uh, it's literacy week in most of our schools in Grand Prairie, and so, uh, some of us, I'm sure, a reading I had the opportunity to read this morning at Swan Avon, so it was, uh, brought me back to my first, uh, location of my first job as an educator, and so brought back, uh, great, great memories for me. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Evern. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I as well attended, uh, a few events in the last couple of weeks, but I just wanted to highlight, uh, one in particular. I attended the Big Brothers and Big Sisters Annual Event, and it, as always, uh, was a sold-out, very full event. They did a great job. Uh, I understand they had record numbers in fundraising this year. I haven't heard the actual amount, but, uh, uh, it was a great sign of two thousand and fifteen when we started, uh, the first true big event of the community, and they had record numbers, so I thought that was great, and kudos to the organizing committee and the volunteers that put that on. Um, and there's a couple other things, but I'll leave it to other people and, um, say that I'm looking forward to the, the next, uh, month or so. There's a lot of interesting things going on in our community, so thank you.
Great, thanks Counsel Clayton. Counsel O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I handed in my list of things that, that I attended, but I want to highlight a couple. We, uh, we went through a strategic priorities review, uh, last Thursday and a couple Thursdays ago, the fifteenth. Uh, we changed some and we added a few on there, and I'm thinking that's gonna bring our city, when we do priority, uh, and, uh, strategize with the province, that, uh, we can have these things already listed on place. Also, I attended the, uh, chamber, uh, discussion on Alberta Economic Development Authority's report on competitiveness today at lunchtime at the Holiday Inn, uh, very, uh, well-attended and, uh, very, uh, uh, the report basically looked at seventy indicators in Alberta and is ranked first or second in twenty-six of these. So it was a good, good conversation, good topic, and, uh, I'm glad I went, and, uh, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Counselor Rice?
I attended the, uh, economic, uh, competitive luncheon that was presented by the Alberta Economic Development and sponsored by the Chamber today. I think some very interesting, one might expect it would be kind of dry, but he was an excellent presenter, and it was very interesting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Um, so, uh, in addition to the items that are on my, uh, form, that'll be form a part of the minutes, I don't know if council members noticed, but your forms, uh, have formed a part of the minutes. They were attached in our package. So, uh, but, so I will, uh, just highlight two items, uh, that I attended over the last couple of weeks, uh, in addition to the ones that are on my list. Um, on the seventeenth, I had the opportunity to attend a Lory party at Revolution Place. It was, uh, the first time that I've attended a party like that, and, uh, my understanding is that it, uh, serves a, a bit of a dual purpose for, um, uh, the, uh, members of the Sikh community, um, in that it is, uh, somewhat like a, a, uh, celebration of the turning of winter, um, but also a celebration of all the babies born, uh, in the previous year. And, uh, so it was really cool to see, uh, a cultural, uh, celebration like that, uh, growing to a size where they took up a significant amount, all the, the one side of the, uh, the Bose Family Garden side of the, uh, Revolution Place. So that was, uh, fantastic. Um, and then this morning, I attended, uh, a meeting of the Northern Gateway, uh, Pipeline Community Advisory Board. Uh, they requested, uh, a presentation from the mayor, and so I was happy to go. Uh, as I was going, I was curious, uh, exactly who the community advisory board was, uh, and what they would be interested in. And, uh, there, I can tell council that there were many friendly faces, um, from, uh, from around the region, around our community. Uh, the community advisory board is, uh, intended to be, uh, an advisory board to Northern Gateway, um, with representatives from with, from around the region. So there were representatives from Fox Creek, Valley View, uh, right here in Grand Prairie, and then some, uh, to the west of us as well. Uh, for my presentation, um, I highlighted an issue that I thought might not have been brought to their attention previously, and that was about the property tax implications of the development of the pipeline. Uh, obviously, the pipeline's important for all of Alberta in the, in the macroeconomic sense. Um, and the local impact, uh, will be felt on the city of Grand Prairie, particularly during the construction phase. Uh, but there is a larger and longer-lasting impact on the municipality through which the pipeline is actually built, uh, in the form of linear property taxes. And so I just raised that issue and the scale of that issue, uh, for the community advisory board, uh, so that if they chose to maybe follow up on that or, uh, discuss the implications of it, uh, that they'd have some of that information at hand. So, uh, I thought it was a, maybe a little bit of a unique perspective, and certainly had a number of, uh, members of the committee come forward to say that, uh, it was the first time that they'd heard about any of that, uh, and had members of the corporation come forward and say that, uh, it was a different perspective, and so, uh, there may be something that we can follow up there. But with that, uh, I believe we have finished our council meeting. Thank you very much.